Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order to reconvene in open session. Welcome everyone to this special board meeting of the Amory Board of Education. There are two agenda items that the board is here to discuss this evening. First, the Learning Transition Plan for Instruction and second, the Participation in Winter Athletics. The Amory School Board of Education aims to make decisions tonight which will make it possible for all students to eventually return to school for in-person instruction and where our kids have the opportunity to participate in winter sports. We are interested in your feedback about what is the best and safest way to return to school. Furthermore, we are determined to find a way for our student athletes to participate in winter sports. You can be assured that the board members seated here with me as well as the staff agree that we all want kids back in school with the opportunity to participate in winter athletics. The goal this evening is to set a path forward for how to achieve these stated objections, objectives, I'm sorry. We welcome your constructive feedback through our community comments portion of this meeting's agenda. However, please know that the board tonight cannot answer questions or respond to your comments. We are here to listen to your feedback. Please limit your comments to five minutes or less. If you wish to speak, please make sure that you're signed up to do so. At this time, if there is anyone who wishes to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name at the beginning of your remarks.
Let's do the minutes in the financial reports. That'll take but a minute or two and then whoever wants to come up to do their thing and come up and talk.
All right, we'll go back. The first, before we start with community comments, we'll start with the consent agenda items which consist of the approval of the minutes and the financial budget reports.
I'll make a motion to accept those.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the minutes and the financial reports are approved and now to the community comments. The first person signed up is Michael Kelly, so please come up to the podium and state your remarks.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for letting me speak. I'm Coach Kelly, the wrestling coach here at Amory. And what I'd like to just come across with starting, I truly believe we could do sports in the winter responsibly here. And if I didn't believe so, or it got to that point, I would shut it down myself because I understand the importance of health and safety and everything that goes along with COVID. And I know there are some other schools that are able to do it. I've talked to them, I've talked with Mr. Fern. I think he'll put together and show a pretty good plan in place that can keep everyone safe and do it responsibly. And I just, personally, I just wish for a chance to prove that and if we can't do it, then it could be shut down, but I just wish for the chance to prove that we can do it. Other schools are doing it and I think we can follow what they've done and continually to make things as safe as possible. Another quick point, not that it matters a whole lot, but for safety of our own kids, we have a lot of good wrestlers. They're gonna find places to wrestle, whether it's at Amory or somewhere else. At least if they're here practicing at Amory, I can make sure they have masks on, they are getting temperature checked, they're only wrestling a certain group, and I can maintain and do some of the things that are safety procedures. If they're in Eau Claire at a club with no mask doing that and then they come back to Amory, then they're just gonna keep, the cycle's gonna keep going. Where if I can keep them here, I can keep them safe or have a better chance to keep them safe. So, you know, rather than have people have to go out of their way to Hudson, Eau Claire, Cumberland, or somewhere else, because a lot of these kids, they're gonna practice somewhere because they have a lot riding and there's places letting them do it. I would rather and feel better about protecting our kids because I feel with the procedures Mr. Fern has put together and myself and some of the other coaches, we can do it safely. And the last thing I'd like to say is too, this decision's, you know, I always look to future. This decision isn't just for these teams tonight. It could go further, say 20 years, maybe 15 years from now. You have a family like the Inghams, their parents grew up here, they went to school here, and probably Walker's gonna come back, he likes his community and wanna raise kids here. If his senior year, he doesn't even get a chance and other schools around him are getting the chance to wrestle, maybe he moves to Somerset instead. Instead of having four or five kids here that could really do well and make the community good, he might choose somewhere else. And it's just a consequence that I think about that maybe you guys haven't. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak for community comments is Alan Carlson.
In the classroom, I teach technology education at both the middle and high school and I serve as a transportation specialist, also knows a bus driver. I'm also outside the classroom as that guy behind the camera. Since my kids have been competing in sports in Amory here, I've been capturing there every moment. You name the cross-country course or the basketball court or the track in a 50-mile radius, Amory, I've probably been there. I looked at my camera bag, it was lying in the corner this week. You know, it was really hard to see and think of all that excitement that I haven't been able to capture through that lens this fall. There's so many character reasons that we encourage students to become involved with sports in high school. Student athletes develop a stronger peer relationship, they build better attachments with adults, gives them a higher self-esteem and a closer sense of family and practice, more volunteerism. They're less likely to engage in high-risk behavior and they have a greater sense of initiative and personal responsibility. Last weekend, my wife and I had a lot of conversation with our son Andrew, who's a freshman at UW Stout. He shared so many stories with us about the new relationships that he's formed with his new cross-country and track family. Those team members help each other out when somebody's struggling in class, they hold each other accountable so that they attend practices and they work all together and they've been very safe through this pandemic. Although the fall season at UW Stout was canceled and they weren't allowed to compete, this team has moved forward and they've had the opportunity to form these relationships with coaches and professors on campus. He said to us so many times how thankful he was, he has been, he is about having been a part of Amory's cross-country team. He said it's kinda like cross-country teams force you to make friends. He feels that that, without that opportunity that he had here in Amory, his freshman year at Stout would not be the same. He sees students who are feeling isolated and many have chosen to abandon their dorm experience and move home to complete classes online. Andrew fully intends to complete his first semester and beyond because he really enjoys this campus routine that he has in his new life. My many thanks goes out to the school board, the administration, and all the coaches that provide all the years of experience for our children in these extracurricular activities. Hope we can work together tonight to find a way to salvage what's left of this school year and provide some resemblance of this experience to this year's student body.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person on the list to speak is Lauren Sobcheck.
You guys are probably thinking, oh great, she's back. Last week, I explained to you a little bit how I thought we can keep winter sports safe. I just wanted to share with you a few reasons why high school kids are playing sports. Not all of our athletes could be here tonight, so I asked a few student athletes from different sports why they choose to play each year. I play for the memories and family that comes with hockey, Nick Bush. I have a strong passion for the game and basketball has always been a big part of my life, Mia Brozzo. Sports give me a chance to let out my anger and improves my mental health, Lily Strike. I play to better my teammates and to be the hardest-working person in the room, Grant Cook. Sports have taught me life lessons and hard work. I play to give myself a challenge and because I love the game, Max Mike. I play because sports help me obtain my goals, Chuck Flannam. 'Cause I want to, Drew Granica. I play because sports give me an escape from being at home. Practices allow me to stop thinking about problems and keep me out of trouble, Erin Collins. I play basketball because it gives me a chance to better myself and has taught me leadership, teamwork, and responsibility, Nora Egger. I play sports to stay in a healthy routine mentally and physically. Sports drive me to become the best version of myself, Lauren Sobcheck. Playing sports allows young adults to become leaders throughout each practice and game. All I ask is you consider our passions and mental health when making this decision. Even if we're unable to compete, allowing us to practice in smaller groups will service us kids in staying healthy, practicing leadership, maintaining our grades, and sustaining our mental health. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, the next person up to speak is Cody Gilbertson. He's gonna pass. Oh, okay. All right, then the one and only person left would be Julie Verkant.
I'm here as a mother, a parent of a kid who wrestles and I really, as a parent, I have no fear whatsoever. Send my kids to Coach Kelly and Inghams because they watch out for the boys, they train them to be men. I have full faith that they know what they can and can't do and keep the boys safe. Secondly, as a parent of young children, I was wondering why in the matrix, there's no similar matrix to what Hudson and Richmond offer with the littles still coming to in-person schooling. It has shown that the littles are not affected by this virus and they suffer mentally from being stuck at home. I mean, it's week two and a half of them being home again. I have tears every day on my side and the kids' side, I'm not gonna lie. And the frustrations of not being able to get the help that they need when they need it because honestly, the new math, I don't understand it myself. So I ask please to find a way to get the littles back in school if we can't get everybody back, which is the best. We have a low-income school district, so I am personally concerned about the mental welfare and physical welfare of a lot of kids in our school district who don't have good parents. Or parents who work their butts off and can't be home with their kids and we don't have childcare options in our area. It's a struggle to find somebody to do so. So please, I just ask that you guys look hard and work hard to find ways to get that back in, in an option. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, that is it for community comments, so we will move on to the action items. The first action item on the agenda is the Learning Model Transition Plan.
Okay, there is a PowerPoint that goes with letters A and B, the Learning Model Transition Plan in Winter Athletics. If you were looking for one of those in the crowd, I believe there was plenty made, so you can grab one at the door. The first half of the presentation I'm gonna walk through and the second half of the presentation with a little help from me is gonna be Jeff Ferns and that'll be the athletics portion. So if you could go to the beginning of that presentation, just to give you sort of the rules of the road in regards to a map to follow so we can have a conversation that leads us where we need to go. That's why we put this together. So the first is the present state of the matrix. This is, this was adopted in August and has been in place with one modification in September. That modification was done so that we could remain here because if we hadn't made that modification, we would have been in a remote model by the end of September. We simply didn't know where to set those numbers back in August. I don't know that anyone would have known. So this is what it looks like right now, this is what we've been tracking, and this is the matrix that we have adopted and used ever since the beginning of the school year. The second slide is, and please chime in with questions, board, anytime you have them. I don't wanna do 30 slides in a row and then answer all your questions, that would be hard. Positive cases within the district, 14-day windows. We are in window number seven right now. Again, two-week windows, starting back in the early part of September. We were in green for the first four of those windows and then when we hit the end of October, early November, I don't think it's a news flash for anybody, those numbers escalated pretty rapidly, about a 500% increase, moving from 211 cases to 848 cases in really but 10 to 14 days. And that was what happened all over this part of the state. So we moved to red in the early part of November and we have been in red ever since. So that was actually the 16th of November was the first day in red. The next page is the breakdown in the district. So in the district, by area, clubhouse, elementary, intermediate, middle, high school, then other. Other is sort of undefined as in it's district office or bus driver or something that doesn't have a building per se. There are, there's a column for staff cases and then a column for student cases. And you'll notice there that we've had 22 staff over the course of, call it three months, September, October, November, and 41 students. And you'll notice the distribution. I'm not sure if anyone has any questions about the information I presented thus far. This should certainly be a time to chime in if you do.
And these are the positive cases?
Positive cases in district over the course of the first three months of school.
So this doesn't include any of the quarantine from, you know, contact?
No, it does not include any of the quarantines from close contact. We've had well over 300 quarantines at some point or another at the high school and well over 500 in the district at some point or another, depending on the time of year kids were in quarantine. And not surprisingly, that would have to be the case with this many cases and it would depend on the time of year for the number, but well over 100 in most cases, sometimes over 200 at a time.
Do we know how many staff have been put on quarantine due to contact tracing?
Total number over the course of the year, all of these folks have been put in quarantine, all 22 of these individuals. And then there are individuals that are on our sub-list on a daily basis. There are teachers that are on the sub-list that are due to close contact and quarantine as a result, that are not necessarily positive. So our sub-list, in some cases, it's been bleak where it's been 16, 18, 20 people out and some days it's been better where there's only six or eight. Today happened to be nine folks on that list. So that's a good day in comparison to what it has been at times.
And I'm assuming this .5 is a person who's half at the intermediate school and half at the high school?
Yes, half in each billing. We don't have half people, so yes, they're split between two billings to try and make the data more accurate. Very good question. Okay, if there aren't any others, I'll track along. The next graph is straight from Polk County Health and this runs us through the 20th of November, which basically is right to the tail end of the week prior to Thanksgiving week. And what this demonstrates is sort of another depiction of similar data, which is we've had a dramatic increase since the beginning of September through now. Positivity rate is about a 500% increase from 6.28% back in early September to 34%. And what that means is for all those tested, 34% of those who are tested test positive. And then the total number of cases, again, is up. And I don't think there's any other way to say that other than it's gone up each and every window. And we don't know what will be in this window. As it stands here today, we have eight students and staff in this window. This runs from Wednesday of last week through today, Monday, and 208 in the county. Those are our numbers as of today. The next page is the statewide data and really what I would only make you look at is the color, blue and red. The dramatic difference here is not that they just wanted to try two different fonts, but rather, blue is category risk of medium or low and red is category risk of high or extremely high. And over the course of three months, we've gone from blue to red, we've gone from medium and low to high. And that's not just us, that's the entire state. I am curious as to what the blue county is at the bottom on the red side, but I don't know my geography well enough to know which one that is. But they're doing well apparently because they're in blue. We all agree, everybody here in the room agrees that the best place for kids to be educated is here. I mean, there are so many benefits of that and there are very few drawbacks, if any. We want them here. I don't think there's anyone that here that feels differently. I've heard all sorts of comments from all sorts of people, whether it's in phone call or in person or email, that have said the same thing and that's students, staff, parents, everybody. But can we safely do that? That's what we're trying to create here. And can we safely do that for a long period of time? So that's our goal. The inherent benefits and drawbacks of remote and in-person learning, we'll talk about in just a second. Now, someone made reference to a few minutes ago, why can't we in our matrix create a situation where we can account for the dangerous effects of COVID-19 for the littles, elementary and intermediate school kids? What you'll see on this page, still the same colors, still the same numbers, the differences that you'll see on this page for a proposal are in the yellow and red sections. If you changed the matrix, this is a proposal for what that change might look like. This is not a change that's been made, it's but a proposal so we can see what that might be. In yellow, what it originally had said was you have a cohort, Monday, Tuesday for this group, Thursday, Friday for that group. This proposal is 4K through 5 is no longer a cohort at all, they're here Monday through Friday, elementary, intermediate. And 612 is in a hybrid setting of you're here Monday, Tuesday, and then this group's here Thursday, Friday, and the other three days of the week, you're educated remotely. The red section would be changed to read 4K through 5 is face-to-face and 612 is remote or everyone's remote, 4K through 12 like we presently are. So this is but a proposal and a draft for what that might look like, food for thought, so to speak, for what you might want to do. So in short form, I know the slides should be longer when you say the benefits of in-person learning. These are the big categories of benefit of learning. You have trained staff that are educating kids socially and emotionally better for kids. Normal school day is a good thing for kids and for parents, for families. Parents do not need to arrange childcare, parents can go to work and it makes a lot more sense to play athletics when you're here going to school. It's what we have been doing for a long time. Now, there are some drawbacks to in-person, but these drawbacks are not ordinary, they're drawbacks to the times that we live in. The safety of students, the safety of staff, student attendance, we've had a lot of kids out, staff absenteeism, shortage of subs in all areas. And lastly, you're talking about a dual model. When you have kids return to school and at the same time, parents that are not willing to send their kids to school, you force teachers into a dual model where they're teaching some kids in person and they're teaching some kids remotely unless you physically assign some of those teachers to be remote teachers, which some districts have done. So that's a drawback of in-person learning that you might not have thought of, it just creates another layer of logistics, if you will. The benefits of remote learning, students have less contact with each other, less contact with staff, staff have less contact with each other, there are fewer quarantines, there are fewer sub issues, and reduce social and emotional stress for students and staff due to safety concerns. Continued, teachers are instructing in one, not two models, students and staff are safer unless they choose to have contact with others. And I'll stop talking here real soon. Drawbacks of remote learning, in-person learning is best academically, students and staff are benefited by the routine of school, school is best for students socially and emotionally, parents can go to work, they don't need childcare. And another drawback of remote learning, which we learned real fast when we got into March, is internet availability and connectivity. If you live in the wrong spot, you might be in trouble, so to speak. Now, what are our neighbors doing? The sheet you see that has all the different various colors on it, these are the instructional models for the county and for the conference, Middle Border Conference of schools that we compete in athletically. This is not all of CISA, which is all the schools that make up this part of the state, there are 40 of those schools. Here you'll see a dozen or so. You will notice that nearly everybody, and I'm not sure in some cases where it's blank, what they were doing at the beginning of the school year, I assume when we started the school year, nearly everybody was in the green, if you will, face-to-face five days a week. By the time we got out into November, you started seeing schools that were coming up with 50/50 models where they're hybrid or they're virtual fully. Depending on the district, the plan was different and that changed from week to week. Our situation, I think everyone's lived it and they full well know what's happened here. So this is just a sampling of our neighbors geographically, Polk County-wise, and also our Middle Border Conference. Now, what you may not see just by looking at this, when it says virtual, sometimes that means 612 is virtual and 4K5 is here physically present. In most cases, I'd say 75% or more cases, districts have their littles, 4K through 5, coming to school face-to-face for five days of learning. That's happening in most cases, can't say in all cases because that wouldn't be true. It's not happening here, I can say that. The benefits of following the matrix, we created it and we followed it since September. District has a decision tree by how to make decisions. I'm not sure if the folks in the room or you know, we're one of, that I am aware of three matrices in the entire CISA. Most everybody else is making these decisions from week to week and it's sort of arbitrary in a lot of ways. We're using actually a decision tree, which I think is a good thing, so at least folks know where we stand. The steps in the learning plan are designed to increase safety, so if things are looking bad, you're moving towards red. Everyone knows and understands the three learning plans. Matrix considers trends in the district and in the county and everyone knows what the learning plan will be from week to week. And in fact, from two-week window to two-week window. Everyone can plan for a change if they need to. Parents and students do not have to keep up with an ever-changing learning plan and Polk County schools are now starting to adopt the Amory model because now there are five districts that I'm aware of that have this matrix, word for word, number for number. And it looks just like ours, it just doesn't say Amory Warriors, so now there's five. I'm not sure how that happened, but it did. Drawbacks of changing the matrix, the matrix's been changed once. If the matrix changes, it becomes much less credible and parents are less able to plan with a changing matrix. And the last slide I will review and then I'll turn it over to you for questions and comments. The reality of following the matrix is this, if the school district of Amory may remain in red through December, January, and beyond if you follow the matrix. Because the numbers, based on, I'm not an epidemiologist and I'm certainly not a mathematician, but if there's 288 cases through this day, which is the fourth or fifth day of the window, you're probably gonna be beyond 415 into the red by the time you get out towards our next checkpoint on December 9th. That would not be a stretch to say that. Would it look the same in December on the 30th? It could. Could it look the same in January? It could. If you follow the matrix, it could be red well into the spring or late winter, that's very possible. And that is the reality of following the matrix. And that's my last talking for the time being and I'll turn it over to you for questions or comments and I'll do my best if you have questions for me.
What did you say the number was, the number of cases? 208?
208 right now in this window, so that's Wednesday through today, was that five days?
Is that just the county or is that the county?
208 in the county, eight in the district through late this afternoon.
All right.
They post, the Polk County posts it every day about two.
What does a typical remote learning day look like for students in K through 5?
I don't think I'm best qualified to answer that question, other than what happens in my own household, but I'm very certain that Orlie and Cheryl would be able to impart what that looks like in the elementary and intermediate, where the two of you would be able to do that. Unless you can yell it out, come up to the mic.
So we created, we have a lean leadership team that had created a schedule that we worked on throughout the summer and as Dr. Dierfler has said many times, we don't have a COVID file, so we have updated that. But we have had But we have had an extremely amount of training in how to do online, which is completely different than what we did last spring. So we are using Google Meets to have live conversations and small group instruction with our students. We are using a tool called CISA, which updates taped lessons for our students to access and all of their assignments. Teachers can communicate with their parents, and parents can communicate with teachers on a one-to-one basis. I would say the amount of time that instructionally is being used is, that our kids are exposed to, is anywhere from 2 to 4 hours a day, depending upon the grade level. As you are aware, we have childcare in our building. So I have been visiting the different childcare areas. And depending upon the grade level is what determines how much time the kids are being exposed to academics. Does that answer your question?
Kind of, but not really.
Okay, go for it.
I want to know, what does a day look like? So if a teacher, one of our elementary teachers comes into the building, what did they do in order to help the kids that are at home? What is their responsibility at home? What, I mean, is it log in at certain times of the day to see teachers? How does that work?
We do not have a schedule like the high school and the middle school. Our kids do not have adults with them. They're not adults, so that they can follow a timed schedule all day long. So they have their iPad, and they can access their work via the iPad. Ahead of time, teachers may have scheduled small group instruction with their kids, small group meetings with their kids, the whole class meeting with their kids. There are taped lessons, so it's a variety of things. So I can't tell you that from 8 to 8:45. I mean, we try to do reading, then math, then social studies and science, phonics, writing. We have it all. But at the same time, you're dealing with children that are 4 to 8 years old. So they're, you know, the amount of time that, and it goes against our grain to have kids sitting in front of a computer all day, which, at that level. So during the school day, the kids at school have, we have recess for them. They have opportunities to get up and move, and they can't, they can't possibly sit there all day long. But they're getting instruction charred. Do I think, this is no surprise. Do I think it's what is best for kids? No. I believe they need to be face-to-face. Elementary, intermediate, for sure.
Is there any, like, you said that the teachers may, like, have pre-arranged small group meetings. Is there any guidance to the teachers? How many times a week that needs to be done? Or is there any minimum standard of how many times that needs to be done with their class, or?
That is not dictated by me. It is dictated by their team. Their team meets and PLCs to determine who needs extra support. Our littles that are struggling learners receive Title I support. And, you know, you're talking, trying to arrange meetings with 40 kids in a week to try to give small group instruction. So our Title I children, the goal is for them to have two times per week of a small group instruction. But not all, not all kids are getting that, because either the parents aren't available to participate, the parents don't respond to the invitation. So it's very difficult. I shared with Dr. Dierfler today, one of my grade levels, 18% of the kids are not responding to remote learning. And it is, full transparency, one of my biggest concern, concerning classes. 18%.
And you mean not responding?
Not responding. They're not responding to the teacher, not responding to the information that is on CISA, not responding to Zooms. Teachers are concerned. I ask teachers to give me names and what they've done to make contacts. They've made phone calls, emails, in order to try to get the families involved. And it goes back to a parent earlier that stated, we are a high-income, or high population of low socioeconomic students. And this is a very difficult time when you are 4 to 8 years old. Our littles are out in the community. You know, families have to work. And so it's very difficult for many of our families to do the remote instruction that we are offering. Even though I am so proud of our staff and the training that they have gone through. Thank you to Mrs. Brighton. Our media specialist has trained our staff. They're doing phenomenal, a phenomenal job. But is it what I consider the best for our kids? No. If you want the honest truth from the elementary principal, we can't service the kids the way we can face-to-face.
So what was that number again? 18%?
18% of a particular grade level.
Okay. So that's not 18% of the whole?
No. I would say the other grade levels are 8 to 10%.
Could you translate, like, about how many kids that is? I mean, we're talking like, like 10 or 18, like?
It's the 22 out of a grade level.
And this is, this all happens to be in this one grade level?
Yes.
You said in the other grade levels, it's more like?
I would say anywhere from 6 to 12%.
I mean, we had the same problem in the spring, where we had numbers from each dis, you know, from each building that weren't responding to the assignments and the, and the online work.
Right. Really, the, from spring to fall, it's apples to oranges. What we are providing for instruction is pretty amazing. I'm not saying we're not doing a good job. We're working really hard and using, you know, the tools that we can to provide instruction. But 100% better than what we did last spring. But it still isn't what I consider to be perfect, by no means.
Well, anytime you don't have the kids here, you're going to have some kids that aren't responding.
Exactly. Which is concerning. Equity issues are important to consider.
Thank you. You can give me a good idea.
The intermediate school looks a little bit different. If you, on our website, we have what we call our Remote Learning Hub. And you can actually go in, and we created this mainly for parents so that they could see exactly what was required. It's a little bit different by grade level. But at the intermediate school, we really tried to keep our same schedule as we do if the kids were here. So if you go to Title I at 8:30, Monday through Friday, you're going to go to a Google Meet with Mrs. Anderson-Hoyer at 8:30 and have your Title I meeting. Or, and our reading and math are what we call Google Meets. It's through Google Classroom, and it's a live meeting with the students and the teacher. Socials and studies and science are activities that they're doing. More paper pencil, or there's activities that are placed in to Google Classroom that the kids can go in. That's not live, but reading and math is. Lots of, lots of work for the students to do. We had the very first week with nearly 100% participation. This morning, it was down a little bit. But, you know, that's coming back after a vacation is normally a little bit hard to get started. I don't have percentages. We wanted to wait until we had another full week to really look at it. But we're, teachers are in direct communication with me and guidance counselors. If we have a child that does not get on a Google Meet or a classroom activity, they're emailing us right away so that we know. And I'm calling. I've been visiting houses. I deliver computers, whatever I can do.
Okay. And are your teachers, grades 3 through 5, accessible to the students throughout the school day? Even let's say they're not in a math or reading. So let's say it's social studies or science time. Are those teachers accessible to the students?
Oh, yes. Yes. We, you know what, much like Cheryl, I leave it up to the grade level teams. But they have what they call office hours. I know one 4th grade teacher included me on an email today, and she had 9 to 11 and 1 to 3, is what she had given the parent that they could contact her for office hours. The other time she was live with the kids. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? If not, I'll move forward. There's only a few slides left that I have in this section. Okay, I'll move forward. Polk County Health, I was on a call with all of the district administrators from Polk County on Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving. In that message that was imparted during that meeting, a variety of messages summarized here. They're concerned, obviously at Polk County, they would be concerned about the spreading of a virus. They believe in-person instruction is best for kids in schools. There are another group that feels that that's what's best. Recommends changes in learning formats which reduce the spread of COVID-19. They're concerned about Thanksgiving and Christmas and how those could potentially spread positives. I think we've heard a lot about that. They're seeing an increase in COVID-19 as a result of increased traffic from Minnesota to here to use bars and restaurants, because Minnesota's got that four-week moratorium on those activities. And the county remains critically high for COVID-19. They are not making a recommendation to us about what learning format we should be in. They simply want the spread to be reduced where possible. Conversation on Monday of last week with Amory Hospital and clinic officials. They're encouraging the school district of Amory to make wise choices about the spread of COVID-19. We've been in conversation with them all the way back into March. It's not recommending a learning model for the district. They agree that a remote model would potentially slow the spread of COVID-19. So that's what both of those groups have shared. The question on the table is, is school the safest place for kids? The likelihood of virus transmission when both parties are wearing masks, and we've been requiring masks since the first day of school, is 1%. That's from the CDC. COVID-19 does spread in schools, but schools are rarely super-spreaders, unless they're not wearing masks. And lastly, a citation here from Boston University, which did a large study on the spread of COVID-19. You can only open schools safely if you have COVID under control in your community. So really, the question of the day becomes, do we have confidence that we have COVID-19 under control in Amory? Enough so that we can open our schools for students and staff? That's really the question of the day. Now, we don't know what's going to occur over the course of the next 7 to 10 days. Could there be a spike effect from Thanksgiving festivities? There very well could. I'm hopeful that there's not. If there is, and their numbers are higher than they ordinarily would be, that makes our predicament a little more sticky. But we don't, we simply don't know that yet. We only know what it is through today, Monday, the 30th. The district has seen relatively low spread at school. District data supports closed contacts are not creating new COVID-19 cases. District COVID-19 numbers have risen dramatically in the last month. Polk County COVID-19 numbers have also risen significantly. Can we safely have kids at school with rising COVID-19 numbers in the district in Polk County? That's a question. And another question on the flip side of that, is there greater risk in not having kids at school? Will kids who are not in school be at greater risk while they're fraternizing with friends, not wearing masks, or socially distancing elsewhere? And that's a very realistic question to ask. And that is the last of the slides in that section. And now is your opportunity for conversation or questions. And again, I'll do my best if you have questions for me.
So I think the issue for us to decide tonight is to just continue to follow the matrix that we put in place or change it into either this proposed learning model transition plan that's, I guess, changes the yellow and the red, or something different. Or, I guess, to table and wait to see what the numbers show until our next board meeting.
Which is the 21st of December, per perspective.
Options that we have before we start any discussion.
The next numbers that come out are?
They come out every day at 2:00. The next window checkpoint is December 9. So next Wednesday. Yes.
Personally, I feel like there's a, two separate issues. How do you open school safer? The quote of, "You can only open your school safely if you have COVID under control in your community", I don't believe is, is true at all. In fact, we saw that as we changed the matrix the last time, knowing that we did not have a whole lot of positives in our own district, but the county numbers were up. So the community is really your county, or even close surrounding counties, because we don't exist in an island here in our little community. I think the question of whether opening schools about being safe or being afraid of spreading, and then the idea of opening schools because of education are like two separate topics. And I don't, I just, I guess, from my own standpoint, I don't feel comfortable changing the matrix with, at this point, without having to really consider this, having heard concerns from staff, from parents. But they're two separate things. You're considering this matrix as a safe issue, but we're talking about kids, education, and those are two different answers. In my mind, those are two different answers.
And yet, we have to, we have to reconcile them somehow.
Well, but do we need to do that tonight?
I mean.
No, and that was one of the issues. I mean, we saw his, the proposal, or we, that we could obviously.
I'm coming from. So I don't think in my mind tonight that I can, that I would be willing to make a vote on changing this matrix tonight, given those two conflicting things.
And I agree, especially with all the benefits that came from the matrix that we put so much time and effort into, and we've already did change it once. And people need predictability, staff, students, parents. To change it tonight would, I guess, be chaotic in a lot of people's worlds. And at least if they knew we were, some of the proposals that we could look at in December or January, that would have kind of a heads up in planning. And then numbers come out every week, every day, that people could follow as well, so they could prepare.
Well, I think the recommendation for opening up at some point, even country-wise, was like, they wanted to see the positive rate, like 5%. And here we stand at 34%, so we're not even close to that. And I think if we postpone any kind of a transition change to our December meeting, would be more prudent for the staff to maybe prepare for something like that happening. Also, we would have to call back staff for transportation and.
They're, they're on standby, in for a little, yes.
And give them a heads up and that. So I think it'd be something that we'd see at least a little more data as far as the positivity rate and those kind of things come December meeting.
Yeah, I would agree. I'm not, I wouldn't necessarily be comfortable making a change tonight. I would just soon see more results, more data from the 12-9 numbers. And perhaps look at this again at our December 20. at this again at our December 21st meeting.
I, I mean, I would like to see our kids back in school. I guess, you know, even when we, if and when we do decide to change anything, we would have to consider when that would take effect. I mean, I don't think anybody's ready for anything to take effect tomorrow, or, you know.
No, we've tried to do a Wednesday decision, a Monday implementation. The next window after the 9th is the 30th, because it's sort of illogical to do it on the 23rd, since we're leaving the next day for Christmas break. So 30th is the next day after that.
Right. So, I mean, I guess just, you know, the sooner we make a decision, the more time we have to let people know. I mean, again, depending on when this would take effect, any kind of a change that we made. The other question I have is, you know, is it something, you know, I've brought this up before, do we consider something more building by building? Or, you know, I guess, I guess that's really it, building, building by building instead of being district-wide. And maybe that, you know, even having it be in the red, the 4K face-to-face and 612 remote, or 4K to 12 remote would be a decision that would be, need to be made. And I guess if we had more specifics on, you know...
If you were, sorry.
What would determine that?
If you were to do that, you would need to make the matrix change in order to do that, and you could certainly do that now, and you can certainly do it on the 21st, you could do it anytime you want.
I, I mean, I do think that, you know, the CDC is saying that schools are not spreading it, the data, I mean, we're looking at the signs, we're looking at the data, that schools are not spreading the virus like the fear, you know, maybe was, and that the CDC is saying that schools are a good place for students to be, and they're not recommending that schools close. Obviously, they're still saying it needs to be an individual decision, which I appreciate, because I wish we had that choice in the spring when we didn't have any cases in this county, and we didn't have that choice then, and, you know, now we do have the choice, and I do appreciate that we have more local control. And we do have an unbelievable amount of cases right now in our county. So, I mean, we have reached, you know, those high numbers. So it's very, it's a very difficult spot to be in, because it is going to affect our district when we have this many cases in the county. It is going to mean we have some cases in the district, staff and students. But I also think that getting students back in school is going to be best for our students, and, you know, obviously, we need to take what's best for our staff in mind as well. And I think we kind of have a split, really, with our staff, as to some staff that really want to be back in school, and some staff that think we should stick with virtual, so...
And I assume that would be true of our parents and our kids, too. There's, not everyone's on the same page on this, I wouldn't think.
I feel like this is like, what we're saying is actually almost conflicting. I feel like we're saying, well, schools don't spread the virus, but because our numbers are up, then we have to close, because in case we spread the virus. So I'm confused, and I guess that's where my, my, those two things that are separate in my mind. I mean, we're either gonna say that schools don't spread the virus, and then the kids would be safer here, and then we know that that's better for their, their education, their mental well-being, their social well-being? Or are we going to not have school because COVID is spreading? Do we under, I mean, do you get that, right? I mean, did I explain that clearly?
It's always the unknown that you worry about.
So do we make the decision from the unknown, but making the decision that says, the science says that schools don't spread it?
I think we need to have a fallback position here, that we are going to have as the underpinning, that which we do know. Okay, so here's what we do know. Cases are on the rise in the district and the county. That's an assumption, we know it to be true. We know that Thanksgiving will probably not be helpful. We know that Christmas probably won't be helpful. Those numbers will increase further than they ordinarily would. So to enter into a decision now to change the matrix when you have a surge, and then on top of that, two more potential surges, I think is unwise. My recommendation is that you wouldn't do that tonight. My recommendation would be that you do change the matrix on the 21st, and we look at the change of yellow and the change of red, so we have the option to bring back 4K through five on January 4th, or January 11th, after those super-spreader events are passed, because the next super-spreader event after that is likely to be Easter. And hopefully, hopefully, we're in a place where we might have a vaccination, which will be of some assistance, because Easter's at the earliest, March or April. That would be my recommendation.
So what if we sit here on December 21st, and we're looking at the exact same thing that we're looking at right now today?
I think that we could be looking at the exact same thing. That is definitely a possibility. It could be worse.
So then do we think that it would be wise to change the matrix then? Because that's really what you're saying, right? Is that, it's not wise to change the matrix now?
I think it is, I think it is wise, and here's why. Because if you change the red as it's proposed to be changed, you could do the exact same thing we're doing right now, or keep 612 remote and bring back 4K five. You're not obligated to bring anyone back with the proposed change on the 21st, not at all, unless you want to do something altogether different. Just gives you the option to do it if you want to. And I feel more comfortable with those super-spreaders in the rearview mirror, and a vaccine potentially three months out, than I do right now, a month, and in the middle of the super-spreaders, where we don't even know what's happened.
But you're talking a spreading event such as Christmas?
Potentially, yes.
But then we would come back to school on January...
Fourth or 11th, the Monday or the Monday.
And so, you're not looking at, you're looking at barely two weeks, if you're lucky, after Christmas, which we won't know what those numbers look like for at least two to three weeks after Christmas.
I'm not an epidemiologist, but I know it'll take some time, yes. What I'm simply saying is that you have the option to do two different things if you make that change on the 21st with red, if you wanted to do that. And you also have an option in yellow. But red is what we're talking about. We skipped yellow, and I don't know that we'll ever see yellow. We thought we'd be there for a short time, we weren't there at all. It just really escalated. So, that would be my recommendation, is to make that change on the 21st, and then you have the option to do it on the 4th or the 11th, or after. Maybe it's not till March, I don't know. But you at least have the option.
So, when we have in these red areas where we have 4K through five face-to-face, and six through 12 remote, my concern is that we're still keeping six through 12 remote.
Yeah, we would be. What are your concerns specifically about six 12 being remote?
I guess I feel uncomfortable with saying that our grades six through 12 are not as important to be in this building as our grades 4K through five.
I'm saying it's more feasible to educate six through 12 remotely than it is to educate 4K through five, in that I think the building principals would wholeheartedly agree on.
And feasible meaning educating, not meaning...
Meaning you can make it happen better at six through 12 than you can 4K through five. Is that a perfect science of every kid? Absolutely not. But it's more possible with 4K through five, more possible to educate a middle schooler or a high schooler remotely than it is an elementary or an intermediate school kid.
And we aren't, and this is just a proposal, I mean, we could look at our initial learning plan and just look at hybrids for 4K through 12 as well. I mean, we're not stuck with this. We could look to see what other districts are doing, look at the numbers. I mean, this isn't, we could modify this if we wanted to.
But remember what other districts are doing, they're just making a decision on a Tuesday and implementing it on a Saturday for a following Monday. And we haven't done that, and I'm proud that we haven't, because it's disrespectful to everyone sitting in the room if we do it that way. People need to make plans for their lives, including us. So if we tweak the matrix, we would do so wisely, and then hopefully, we would call it a day, and that's where we would be until the end of this thing, which is sooner, rather than later, I hope.
Well, I think we're gonna be looking at this plan for the rest of the year, honestly.
Maybe, maybe.
I mean, I think we're gonna be...
Maybe.
I think we're gonna be checking on it every two weeks for the rest of this school year. I mean, hopefully, we can get back to the green at some point and stay there, but I don't know, it's looking like we're gonna be in the red for a long time, from my best guess.
And remember, again, if you make that change in red, you have two different options in the red. Right now, you have just one, what we're doing right now.
And the number of cases in the middle school and high school are at least double of what they are in the elementary.
Sure, you're looking at it, obviously, I'm not, but they're certainly higher.
Yeah.
They are, which I think we would have probably guessed. Middle, high schoolers certainly are mobile, they're moving around, they're working, et cetera. They're not, elementary kids probably by definition are either here or home, or wherever mom or dad have them, but high school kids could be any number of places, as could middle. And are, I'm sure.
Well, and again, our 4K through five kids are in a classroom, they have 20 kids or so in a classroom with one teacher...
Yep.
That they can pretty much be in, granted, they're going to recess or wherever, but they're not interacting like our middle school and high school kids who are changing classes.
It's easier to keep them in a cohort when they're younger and in a classroom. You can't do that when they're a sophomore and they're going to four different classes in a day, plus lunch, plus break, and then a job. They're just not, I mean, they're interacting with a lot of people.
But, I, I mean, I agree that it's still important to have them here, and especially for some kids, it's like vital for them to be here, they're not, you know, they're probably having the same issues where you're having some of those older kids who are checking out, who are not going to classes, who are not logging in, who are not...
Well, I guess that comes back to that same thing. Well, okay, just because we have cases of students in the high school that are more, if school isn't spreading it, then why not have them back in the building?
It's a very legitimate question.
Do you know, Lanay, sorry, I'm kind of going off, but do you know, like, how many students that have been quarantined because of a contact at school have come down with COVID during their quarantine time?
I don't believe there has been any, any of the children who have been quarantined from a positive contact. Now, we have, you know, we had a team where we had three students positive, and we have some employers where we see, you know, some healthcare, students who are working in healthcare, where you've seen a higher percentage of students who are positive. Over the last two days, you were asking Dr. Dierfle about numbers of staff who are quarantined. In the last two days, I have had eight staff who are quarantining, and four that are positive. And some of the staff are quarantining because of college kids that are now home. So when many of the college kids leave their campuses, they're told, don't come back until after Christmas. So now we have another population that's affecting our school population, so...
So, but it doesn't seem like the kids that we're, that the school is quarantining because of a contact, possible contact at school, are coming down with it in that two-week time that they're being quarantined?
No, it's like a family, like we have had numerous cases of, you know, everyone in the family getting it. So I haven't seen it, I haven't been able to see a lot of anything that would make me believe that, oh, we have a problem right here because we're seeing a whole group of children.
Even, even, I'm just asking, even for sports, I don't know if you know, because I don't know if you're tracking the sports numbers, but like, when we quarantined the football team, did other football players come down with it?
We had three students, but I can't tell you if it was from the football game or the team, you know, it could have been from a social gathering, or something else. I wouldn't want to say it was from that in particular, because it, the timing was very, I mean, it, they all got it very quickly at the same time, and that, to me, doesn't really jive with, you know, your, your period of up to 10 days. So I would, I would hesitate to say that that was from that football contact.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
We have lots of questions, but I don't know who has the answers.
Well, I think all our crystal balls are a little cloudy.
Prognosticators have been cured of that habit by 2020.
But I guess I'd make the motion to table this until our December 21st meeting, we can meet it again, and we give the staff some time maybe to, if we're gonna change it to this transition model, or tweak it, that they would have some opportunity to understand how that's gonna work for them.
I guess, I guess I would like to see, maybe, and again, I guess, maybe I'm asking if there's been discussion about doing it by building, if that is an option, or if that is not something that the administrative team...
The models that I'm aware of are Hudson River Falls and New Richmond, and I don't think that they're by building, but I'll look. I mean, I don't have to look in Wisconsin, this is happening in the whole country. I'm sure it's out there, what that looks like, I don't know. But I'll look.
Because like, New Richmond has K through five in, in school, and their older kids are in remote, correct?
I missed the first part of your question, sorry.
I think New Richmond has the K through five kids in school?
I don't know, maybe Cheryl, yes.
And their older kids are remote, right?
If you look at the one K-14, at the...
They're splitting that.
Uh-huh.
Want to be Amory, Frederick, and Unity, is that, remind me? For this week, okay, we're talking next week. Yeah. So it looks like three schools this week are out, and that'll probably be down to two next week, potentially.
I know, I tried, I actually went and looked up some of the school districts and tried to figure, it's not always easy to go to other people's websites and figure out what they're doing.
I tried that statewide, and I couldn't get anywhere.
About some of the surrounding schools, what are they, you know, are they in person, and are they doing 4K in person, through, 4K through fifth in person, or what? Anyway, yeah, it's, it's a little challenging to collect all that data. I know there's a motion on the table, and so we can certainly go back to that, I guess. And part of me says we maybe should talk about some other models, and part of me says the sooner we make a decision, even if the decision is not going to take effect until January 4th, you know, I almost think that that's better, but maybe we want to look at some other plans or some other options as far as...
I'll bring more if you want me to.
Going by building, again, I don't know what the administrative team thinks about doing it more by building.
I'll bring whatever you would like on the 21st, if I can get my hands on it.
Well, we'll see more data and everything by then.
We will.
I really don't think that our data is going to change, though. I mean, I think we're gonna still be looking at the same numbers.
No other options.
We'll at least hopefully understand what the uptick from Thanksgiving break is. That should be at least clear, and maybe give us a path as to what could happen with Christmas. Again, it's a crystal ball.
It is.
And I would, I would really like to see a way that we can get everybody back here, even if it's not every day, but everybody back here. If we're gonna, for me, and I'm only gonna speak for me, but I will, I want to support everybody being back here and not pick and choose.
Okay, I think we're on to the second half of the presentation, and...
We haven't voted yet.
Well, I think we need us, is there a second?
Oh, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Anyone opposed?
All right, the learning metal transition plan will be tabled until the next board meeting of December 21st, and the next action item, Winter Olympic, Alithic.
Winter Olympics. I'm not sure.
In Amory, Wisconsin.
This mask really messes with me sometimes.
I want to hear about some slalom.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Dierfler and I have worked together discussing winter athletics, along with Mr. Gould, Mr. Benson, and the whole administrative team. Important topic. We're now transitioning, I know we previously were discussing bringing in a buildings' worth of kids at a time, the entire district. We're going to talk more about bringing smaller groups of kids in at the high school, potentially middle school level, and look at a potential reentry plan back to athletics. I'll walk you through the PowerPoint. Some of this may look familiar from last time we spoke. The first chart there just shows the different opportunities our athletes have when their original start date was, and how many weeks are remaining in their season. It's also important to note, as I mentioned last time, that each sport, they have to have a certain amount of practices before they can actually compete. So, say you were to table this for two more weeks, at that point, they would have to have an allotment of practices before they could compete. Example that I would point out here would be wrestling, and they have to have eight practices before they can compete, and they can only have one match every six to seven days. And their season was already restricted, just like all of these seasons were restricted by roughly three weeks due to the pandemic and the WIA realigned the winter, the fall, winter, and spring athletic seasons. Moving on, winter athletics were suspended. Middle school boys' basketball had completed two games. Wrestling was slated to begin on November 23rd, and then, middle school girls' basketball slated to begin on January 4th. Under the current resolution, which we approved in October, we said the face-to-face learning, we can participate in athletics. The hybrid learning, we can participate in athletics if we go fully remote. We do not participate in athletics. Winter athletics in the county and conference schools, actually before this meeting, New Richmond was having the same conversation as we are tonight, and they voted unanimously to continue with athletics. So, currently, we are the only school in the area who is not participating in athletics. I know for sure at the high school level, I can't speak to all the middle school levels, but most middle school programs are still active. Mr. Dierfler, I'll let you talk about the Minnesota order there.
Just making reference to the Minnesota order, we're more aligned with what takes place in the cities than we are with most of the rest of Wisconsin, and they put a moratorium on adult sports activities and organized youth activities for four weeks through December 18th. It's food for thought, in that they're our neighbor, and that's what they're doing with all of this.
A lot of us are looking for data when it comes to athletics, the transmission. The University of Wisconsin did a study back in September. I know we had a number of outdoor athletic events going on. Football was outdoors, but a very personal sport in terms of space and whatnot, a lot of contact. There was 30,000 students who were part of this survey, and they found that there was 271 COVID-19 cases related to those 30,000 students. 14 of those were traced back to sports. The virus was transmitted during an athletic activity, whether it was practice or a game. So, we're looking at a half percent trace back to the sports contact. You know, I get it, numbers have increased significantly in October, November. Would these trends hold true in November? I'm not sure, but it is some data that we do have to go off of for our fall athletics in September. Mr. Dierfler was working with Polk County Health and also Amory Hospital and Clinic.
And I think you heard most of what I said before, but I'll reiterate some of those points. Their recommendation at Polk County Health is just to, not making a recommendation of whether we should play sports, they're simply trying to make a recommendation as to increase the opportunity for safety by decreasing the spread of COVID-19. They indicated to me the longest line list, which means if you contact a person that's positive, you're on the list, if you will. Those longest lists are coming from athletics and also from childcare settings. They indicated in the first week of girls' basketball practice, three of the nine Polk County schools had their teams in quarantine, and we have had three positives result in quarantines, at least in part for three different activities, including the cancellation of our football game not so long ago.
I think it's important to note there, football, we didn't have footage of the practices that were happening. It was from several days before. It's hard to remember what you ate for dinner last night, let alone you came into contact at football practice. We did quarantine the entire team at that point. Girls' basketball, we did not have to quarantine the entire team, and neither did we have to entire, or quarantine the entire boys' hockey team. It's just individuals for those. We did have footage that we could review.
Amory Hospital and Clinic, they're not going to make a recommendation as to what we should do with winter athletics. They simply don't want to see activities which result in a spread potentially of COVID-19, and they want us to make smart decisions surrounding that, which I'm happy they're saying that. They're our medical provider right here in town, so hopefully, we're going to do right by them, so to speak.
When you look at the numbers here, we have 99 athletes registered for our winter athletics.
And this is high school only?
High school only, correct. In the proposal that we'll talk about, we're not asking to bring all of them back in. Practice at the same time, be at the facility at the same time. We have a diligent plan how we can get them in here safely in smaller groups throughout our different facilities throughout the district here. COVID-19 protocols, each sport has a mitigation plan. It's pretty in-depth. I can send you the link if you'd like to look at it, but each sport has different protocols. In general, all sports will abide by these protocols. Temperature checks before entering the locker room, the kids show up, they'll get their temperature check right away from a coach. They'll also answer the COVID-19 checklist, will go over any symptoms that they may have, people that they've come into contact with. Coaches will document that, that will be the attendance for that practice. Then they will put that information in a binder if we happen to have a positive case. We can pull up the cameras in the gyms, at the rink, in the wrestling room, and work with Lanay and company as we try to identify those individuals who were present and may have come in contact with somebody who has tested positive. As the kids come in, they answer the, they get their temperature checked, they answer the COVID-19 checklist. They'll also sanitize their hands, and they'll go into the locker room and change for their practice. Coaches are assigning lockers socially distanced as best as possible. It looks different everywhere, but we don't want lockers right next to each other, because kids spend time there, obviously changing and getting ready for practice. We're asking our coaches, these first few days of practices, if we are allowed to move forward, to spend time on individual and small-group drills, stay away from the large scrimmages, a lot of contact, keep things very individualized, and we'd want to start out slow. We ask that there's a seating chart on a bus for away games for tracking purposes. All students will wear a mask, all athletes. It's across the Middle Border Conference. Even if the governor's order was to be released at some point, school districts are saying you must wear a mask and able to participate, whether we're talking hockey, we're talking dance, basketball, wrestling. Everybody has to be masked up. It looks a little different in each sport. Hockey's got shields. Wrestling's got these like double Velcro masks with the headgear. I don't even know if they're going to be able to see their face at all. It's like a little mini helmet there, but it's, you know, and the WIA has said if a school district requires masks, after, if the governor order goes away, you must abide by the home team's orders, otherwise, you just simply don't play the event. In my experience, in the fall, we had a couple situations in other sports. People will mask up and they'll play. The kids want to play, so they'll do whatever they have to, to be safe. Additional protocols by each sport, basketball, give you an example, boys' basketball, there's 30-plus basketball players, three teams. They're not all going to practice in this gym at the same time. The varsity would practice here, you're looking at roughly a pot of 10. The JV would be on the middle school main court, put the curtain down, and the C team would be on the north court. So, we would have three different courts going, spread out, small pods of kids practicing. Hockey, they have 28 kids, looking at two separate practices, bringing in 14 kids at a time to start. Now, once we got moving closer to their, they have to have 10 practices, they would need some time with most of their varsity players to work on strategy and plays and things like that as they're approaching some potential competitions. Wrestling has agreed to start out with two separate practices. So, you're looking at your 106-pounders, through your roughly 45-pound kids coming in, and then 152 up, up to heavyweight, those kids would come in and practice. In wrestling, you're interacting with one individual, where other sports, you might come into contact with multiple individuals. Hockey, there is some research done that stated, in the actual hockey game, you're only within six feet of the same person for roughly a maximum of 45 seconds, because they're always moving. I'm sure that was a fun job to track that, but that's just with some interesting data that was shared, because there's always some hesitancy when we're bringing in another opponent to compete in the contact and whatnot. From the athletic department, we're asking student athletes are able to return to what we would call modified practices right away. Simply easing our way into this, emphasis on individual and partner skill development. I think in any year, that's a good way to start on the fundamentals, individual drills, skills, but then naturally build up to more intense team practices and competitions. However, understanding if, you know, certain sports, it's easier to do compared to others, but we may not have to have a scrimmage time in basketball every practice. If it's a couple days before a game, in case you have a positive case, you would not have to quarantine as many. Coaches will get creative and strategize how they go about setting their practices up. Again, we have a complete mitigation plan for each, each sport. It's kind of just the overview of it. Questions from the board?
If we do resume athletics soon, I know Lanay has already has her hands full with the school district. If we are not in, if we're in virtual with the rest of school, maybe, again, maybe she's able to handle tracking sports, but I'm wondering if we are back in school, if we need more help, if Lanay needs someone else to be doing the sports contact tracing. Just.
Well, I can tell you that Mr. Gould is great at running these cameras here. He and I would work on that, and we would work with the coaches in looking at the footage that we have available to us. These are great cameras. We've done it a couple times for a couple different situations. We would, we might ask the office staff to help us make some phone calls if we got to that point, but Lanay's in four different buildings. She doesn't need to deal with athletics. She's asked me numerous times.
I'm out of here, if I have to call all those parents.
Right.
Okay, well, good. I just want to ask, because it seems like there doesn't need to be more put on your plate.
I thought she asked you to ask that during the meeting.
When you were, you're doing your protocols here, you didn't address spectators, fans, or volunteers?
So, the, you know, honestly, it's the least of my worries right now, but the Middle Border Conference has agreed to simply allow home fans only. I haven't talked to our coaches about that, our athletes about that, but as we had to make some sacrifices with some things, that was one, that we wanted to be uniform across the Middle Border Conference, and then we'll obviously do everything in our power to livestream our events. So, it'd be home fans only, you get two tickets per player, no student sections. The gym will be, the arena, the rink, whatever, will be, it'll look a little different, but whatever we have to do to allow our athletes to compete. I'll give you an example, in the gym right here, we would have no parents on this side. Our benches would be over here, we'd have stager chairs for our folks that are sitting on the bench, not competing. Fans would be on this side. Do our best to socially distance, and then we wouldn't push the bleachers out all the way either. Give our officials a little room to work on the sidelines.
Just having sheer numbers of people in this gym creates an opportunity for, does it matter how well you follow your protocols during the game or during practices, you're increasing your odds now of parents being here and spreading, and then giving it to their student athletes. Correct?
I think anytime you bring people on campus, it increases your chances. That's correct.
Their houses with their own parents, but you're, now you're giving those parents.
Well.
What everybody does outside of here, we don't have control over. But if we're having an environment where we're saying, "Come in here to this building, and we're providing a venue for these people to gather, and then to spread that transmission of COVID, and then increasing our county numbers, our district numbers, and keeping our schools in a different model than everybody here," that's a concern.
Now, I don't know if. And I just look at, we had an indoor athletic team this fall, volleyball. I thought it went very well. People were wearing their masks, they were socially distanced. I think it's a, it's an essential event for a parent to be able to watch their kid compete. I get what you're saying, though, when you do bring people in the building, but I'm really confident we could do it safely. At the end of the games, we will put 10 minutes on the clock, and the parents need to vacate the building. They cannot go take pictures with their child. That's kind of a norm for a lot of schools, that parents do that. They mingle with their kids, but it'll go straight to the locker room. The coach might like it, and parents will go home, so.
And that's something that you could maybe prohibit, too. I mean, I know, like, the tennis state tournament, we, no parents were allowed. They livestreamed it, and you had to subscribe. So, that's another option to, I guess, limit the spread just by not allowing parents to come.
Correct.
But the kids are still able to play, and the parents are still able to watch through We Are Amory, or whatever that website is.
Well, if you asked our athletes if they could compete without any fans, I think they would choose that with, sitting on the sidelines.
Sure.
I still think it's possible to do it safely. Is it the absolute safest? Probably not, because we're bringing people into the building. But if they're masked up, two tickets per athlete, I don't envision more than 25, 30, 35 people sitting in that side of the bleachers. I've seen other schools, they put like an X where people can sit. They get escorted to their spots. I would like to see our parents be able to see a few of their child's, you know, it could be their senior year, but I also want to see our athletes be able to compete.
It would seem like we could bring in, like you say, 30 people, 40 people. I mean, if you're talking to JV in a varsity event, right, maybe you're looking at 20 to 25 kids, probably?
Yep. We could, we could always ask those JV parents that have nobody on the varsity if they would leave after their game.
It does kind of go against a little bit of, when we came face-to-face opening up the school, though, we said, "No parents in buildings, no volunteers in buildings." And now, we're kind of going away from that a little bit and saying, "Well, it's, now it's okay now."
Well, for volleyball, the parents were, I mean, the students got two tickets. That was true for volleyball right at the beginning.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it went really well in the fall. I mean.
Yeah, I, you know.
Right, yeah, it does. You know, we have the FedEx guy come in, and UPS and essential workers come in, and, you know, but yeah, I.
But we weren't looking at the numbers in the, in the county either during volleyball season that we're looking at right now. And we were, our schools were face-to-face education, and we're not now.
Yep.
You know, this is 99 student athletes that we have, and God love every one of them, but we're really tasked with doing what's best for 1,200, 1,300 kids as a whole. And if we can't have them here and educating them, but we're telling people that we can bring in 99 kids safely, we'll double that or whatever every time you bring in a sport. bring in 99 kids safely, we'll double that or whatever every time you bring in a sporting event, why can't we have kids in this building for education?
Although you, we are still educating the students, they are still giving an education, even if it's different, even if it's virtual. You can't virtually play sports, you can't virtually compete or practice, you know, so they're getting none of that at all.
Well, I don't know, gaming is pretty big out there.
At the end of the day, you're putting 99 kids...
Aren't you playing "we"?
You're putting 99 kids in eight different venues.
Right.
If you're splitting your teams, so you're not putting 99 kids in this gym.
No.
And you're putting 50 at most spectators on this side of the bleachers, and if we can't socially distance 50, we need to get some mathematicians here in town to help us figure it out. We should be able to do that.
Well, you know, I'm just, I guess I'm looking at what we said at the, well, what you said, Dr. Durfler, at the October meeting. If we enter into a remote situation, when we pass this...
Yep.
If we enter into a remote situation, in my mind, there's no debate. If there's a tremendous upsurge in cases, and if we are in remote learning, the majority of our parents aren't going to let their kids play anyway.
I can't speak for what the parents are going to do, but I can say this, that we didn't have the mitigation plan that we have presently in place on the 16th of November, and further, that was the very first day of us being in red, November 16th. I thought that would have been a very unwise thing to make a change that day.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
It would have been a very unwise thing to do on the very first day of being in red, to change our matrix so we're not in red. We have two weeks since then, and now we're talking about three additional weeks from that point before we're even looking at changing our matrix, and this crowd's going to be sitting on the sideline for 10 days after the 21st, which puts us into the first week of January, and then they get to compete, and the end of their season's the end of January. I mean, that season's abbreviated almost down to nothing at that point. We have a plan in place that can make this happen. We also have a plan in place to make 4K through 5 happen, but we're talking then 800 people, not 99 people. That's a huge difference.
So those things were discussed in October, when we entered into the agreement of, when we had the discussion of having winter sports, if we were in the green or in the yellow, but not in the red.
Correct. That was the resolution.
So what has changed from October to now, then? Is it the mitigation plan? Is it what?
I think partly the mitigation plan, and I'll give a lot of credit to Jeff Fern for advocating for student athletes and the coaches. I think we have a plan in place that can make it happen, and I think it would be a wise move to see if we can. If it can't, it can't, and then we'll be done. And I know it's a dramatic change from October, I get that, but this has been a moving target since the beginning of March. To keep up with how to stay ahead of the curve on this has been nearly impossible from the first moment it started.
And I think that's the same thing with school, and whether or not we're in person in school, is that, you know, we're not trying to just keep changing things, but we really are trying to look at the science and the data and the recommendations from the CDC for school as well, you know, that, but, I mean, I agree with, you know, the athletics. So what, what's your recommendation?
My recommendation is that we engage in winter sports, beginning with high school kids, and then if we can get that underway, then we look at middle school kids. Middle school is less of a burden to the WIAA in regards to requirement, and we do that as soon as we can possibly do that, with all of the mitigation proposals that you heard here this evening, plus the mitigations that these sports have already imposed upon themselves. And believe me, there is a lot that we've imposed upon them, and they've imposed upon themselves. They want to do this. Are they going to be safe? I can't make that assurance. No one in this room could do that. But can we make it safer? I believe we can, and if we can't, we'll be on the sideline very shortly thereafter. I hope that doesn't happen, but it could. I'm very realistic to know that.
Sorry, when would this take effect?
As soon as we can make it happen. I don't know when the coaches, but I talked to Jeff and Josh this afternoon, and they're very convinced if we want to make this happen, they would be ready to roll tomorrow.
All of our winter coaches are aware of tonight's meeting. I told them I would, you know, inform them via email after this where we stand. I've called all of them today, said we do have a meeting if we need to, if we get the green light, we would begin practice tomorrow for a couple of the programs. A couple of them would like to wait till Wednesday. They don't necessarily, their next competition doesn't require them to practice tomorrow. Other programs, it does require them to practice tomorrow.
And I'm assuming all our coaches are on board and are comfortable with trying to make a season?
They are, yep. And I didn't, I didn't talk about this either, but athletics are voluntary, it's not a requirement, but sometimes you do feel obligated if you are a head coach or an assistant coach, but I have, I've not had one coach informing that they do not feel comfortable with. They've all been very respectful and patient during this process, but I know they're all eager to get their teams back on the mat, the rink, or the court.
You know, and I understand this real well. I guess my one concern is, is that we have a lot of extracurricular activities in our school system, and so if we say this group can do it, how do we facilitate the other groups from being able to do things that, whether it's...
And I think I could speak to that best, Jeff. When we first went into closure by state order in March, we were all on the sideline, every, every activity under the sun. When we got to the point where we could start opening up our doors, we did so in early June. We opened it up to the community to use our facilities. When we were able to start having events, activities that were school-related that weren't fall sports, we started doing that, but the one condition for doing that was, what is your plan of safety? If you don't have a plan, you don't participate. We don't do it. We have to have a plan in order for you to do it. We do not want to create our own super-spreader events. We have a plan for hockey, we have a plan for basketball, we have a plan for wrestling. Anyone else that comes along that wants to do an activity, if they have a plan and it's approved and it's safe, we would do that, too. It's part of the school experience, I full well understand that.
So we're talking other extracurricular activities?
Other co-curricular activities. Your FFAs, FCCLAs, your student councils, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Are they going to have to do it dramatically different than they ever did before? Yeah, absolutely. We're talking about putting wrestlers on the mat with masks on their face. That's dramatically different than we've ever done it before. So yes, it's going to have to look different.
I guess that's where I would feel more comfortable, is saying to make sure that, you know, other groups that, in our extra C schedule, you know, know that they can create a plan and do something and meet.
Most of our groups are extra Cs that we're referring to, a lot of them are already doing things virtually. They have ability, they already got it built into their program right now. I applaud them doing that.
Yeah, I, that's...
Such a destination imagination, they are preparing the state and the locals, they're all moving to a, it's all presumed. And so even the state competition won't be in person, but they're prepared to make those kinds of changes and unveil that to get started, and they wouldn't have to, I think, the school even to do that. There's more to it than that.
And if you want to make your action more encompassing, you simply refer to it as co-curricular activities, that's everything, not just sports. That's everything there is.
We're simply just asking, though, to ease our way into the high school athletics once we get comfortable there. I don't know what the timeline is, then we would be looking at some of those other events, but, and I know I would have help with the four buildings and whatnot because there's extracurriculars at all buildings, but from the athletic side of things, I wouldn't want to give middle school the green light necessarily tomorrow. We need some time to get the high school underway. I think that's, you could deem that as more essential at this point.
The other issue of middle school sports is transportation. Like, if you're driving, you're not, you're not, you're not, much, much, like, in varsity.
Well, I think even our high schoolers, our freshmen and some of our sophomores don't drive either, so they're going to have, and we're in a remote setting, so it's not like they're going to stay after school for practice.
My hunch is if we fire up practice and activities like we're talking about, the folks that are situated right over there will make sure they get here somehow. That would be my hunch. They'll probably bring them themselves.
And the same thing with middle schoolers, too. I think that, you know, if we did start middle school sports, that you would have, you would have, you know, people would figure out a way to get here to practice.
If we think about like traveling, ball, club, wrestling, we have those events typically a little later in the evening, but parents seem to find a way to get their kids to those activities. You know, we would have to look at, will we actually start practice at 3:30, or would we want to wait till 5:30? What are our coaches' availability? I really think those are logistics we can work out with our coaches, our players, and our parents.
Every September for 14 years, when I stood next to the large pile of wood that was burning, there were kids from all over Polk County that made their way there somehow. They all made it. They were there, because they wanted to be.
Well, I'll make a motion that we resume co-curricular activities, specifically high school winter athletics.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Right. No vote. What? I will not vote. Oh.
Is that a...
I'm abstaining from the vote. Okay. Well, we still have a majority, so it is approved, so, thank you.
Thank you.
We have personnel left. Get that one.
All right, the last action item, personnel action.
There are new employment contracts for Custodian Middle School, Lori Swanteck resignations for Elizabeth O'Connell Begston, Custodian Elementary, Anna Furlough, Fadia Sala from School Nutrition at Middle. Those are three items that need to be acted on in one.
I'll make a motion that we approve the personnel action.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, personnel action is approved, and there's no reason to go back into closed session, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Roll call, Aaron.
Yes.
Char.
Yep.
Gail.
Yes.
Pete.
Yep.
All right, yes, we're adjourned.